Yeah, good value matters. All right, you ready? Welcome to the, uh, what is it, October 27, 2022, meeting of the Stockbridge Select Board. We're gonna start off with a, a public hearing on, uh, what's your address here, probably?
Fifty-six Mackinac Road.
Right, fifty-six Mackinac Road. So I move that we open the hearing to consider the application for special permit for a public hearing for Cedar of the, for a property located at fifty-six Mackinac Road and waive the reading of the notice and incorporate the notice into the minutes of the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Patrick. All right. Following procedures will be followed. Testimony void limited to the issues directly related to the subject matter. Only one person will be permitted to speak at a time. All discussions will go through the chair. All parties will conduct themselves civilly and arguments between parties will not be permitted. We're not expecting that. Ask the app, uh, whoops, each person who testifies at chair, okay. So why don't you start and identify yourself? And let's get started.
Good evening. My name is Brent White from White Engineering. On behalf of the applicant, thank you all for your time this evening. As stated, this is a special permit for a modification to a pre-existing non-conformity under section six point one of the zoning by law. In this case here, the subject property fifty-six Mackinac Road is pre-existing non-conforming, both with respect to the lot size being less than four acres, as well as the existing home being deficient in number of existing setbacks. For your reference, this outer boundary is our property boundary, which you see here in orange is the required fifty-foot setback from all property boundaries. And what is shaded in purple here is the existing home and what is proposed is in yellow. So really, the reason we're here this evening is it's very small portion of the house. The existing house is approximately forty-one point eight feet from the existing site boundary and the proposal is further, forty-four point zero one feet. So in this case here, the nature of the addition is for the construction of an elevator for the applicant's use, which requires direct access to the driveway and garage area here, hence its placement with respect to the structure and the reason that it's not able to comply with the setback. In this case here, we are in greater conformity than the existing structure is. We're not intensifying or making any setback condition worse than what exists currently. The product, even with the reduced lot size being less than four acres, still well within our floor area ratio of twenty percent and less than ten percent lot coverage. So meets all those requirements. I've submitted to the board and you also, Mr. Canal has received via email, email from our butters from fifty-eight Mackinac Road voicing their support for the product as well. So overall, we believe it's in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, in no way detrimental, allows the improvement of the property and for the applicants to continue to enjoy the property for multiple generations and for a greater period of time. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Is there any additional living space?
Really, on the first floor, it's the, you have a small recreational space that is compliant with the setback here. What you see at this point here is really the, the basis for the elevator shaft, as well as just more of a mudroom for serving as the new access coming into the house and ensuring that it has the proper way to connect to the second story.
You don't change the, the roof line?
No, that is, thank you. The existing roof building height does not change and it's still less than thirty-five feet.
Okay.
Anything else for me, guys?
Nothing.
Anybody wants to speak for an opposition from the public? Hearing none. I move that we close the evidentiary portion of the hearing and move to deliberations by the board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Patrick. All right. Anybody have any issue with this?
No.
All right.
No.
So.
Sounds like a need, not a want.
All right.
Yes.
Uh, anybody wanna have a motion?
I can also reset the special permit.
I'll second it.
All right, roll call vote. Aye, Patrick.
Aye, Chuck.
Aye, Jamie.
All right.
Thank you all for your time. Have a great night.
Well, that was easy. Thank you. All right. Is Jim here? Jim Finerty? Anyone representing Jim? We're gonna just skip that for now, just in case he thought the first one was gonna go longer and we'll come back to it if, if Jim is able to be present. All right. The next thing I just wanted to mention is I had a chance to talk with Don Schneider and he's asked me to come in next week and, and talk to Water and Sewer Commission about an idea, which is to concurrently look at the, the sewer expansion plan as the INI study. And the reason to do that is with half a trillion dollars in federal money related to infrastructure that's available is kind of a once in a generation thing. I think if we're gonna consider, really if water and sewer is gonna consider an expansion, I think the town should be, try to be positioned to apply for, for federal and then state, the state flow-through money to do that expansion rather than fund it through our taxpayers. So I wanna just, you know, take the water and sewers temperature and he thought it was a good idea and invited him to speak, but I didn't wanna go in there and speak without talking to you guys. All right, good. Jamie, I think, no? All right. The next is the White Pines Condominium Association. Hello.
Is this a good place to start from?
Sure.
Bill Martin of Martin and Oliver on behalf of the association. And I think you all have a letter from me, which describes really why I'm here. This is a situation where the White Pines has a couple of special permits that date back quite a while. And over the years, there's been some discussion about, and in fact, some of the, some of the units have had small additions put on. There has been a little bit of a hodgepodge of confusion in terms of the scope of the building inspector's authority to grant building permits for those small additions. Generally speaking, when you have this type of special permit, there is some discretion that the building inspector does have to allow minor modifications to the original site plan based upon just an incidental change. I think the building inspector became, not necessarily concerned, but wanted to be a little cautious in making sure that the Board of Selectmen was aware that that was happening and, and we had some really agreed upon parameters. There had been, earlier, I think, folks thought that there had been this exact type of dialogue that occurred, but no one could find it in any of the select board meeting minutes in the past. So in speaking with your town council and with your building inspector Ned Baldwin, we agreed that the best approach would for me to come in, explain the situation again, ask you for your essentially consent to have the building inspector issue building permits for modifications of individual units up to five hundred square feet. These are small decks or decks that get enclosed. We've agreed that at this point, we're talking about one such addition per unit. So it isn't per owner and it can't continue to grow. I'd also point out, just as an aside, that within the condominium regime itself, this type of modification can't occur without an internal review process through a building review committee and then a decision by the trustees to grant what's called a limited common area agreement, so that the unit owner can actually build something in what was otherwise be common area. So we think that this is really just a, an effort to create a, a paper trail and a public record for a practice that we think is really fairly, fairly inconsequential, but important to the unit owners into the condominium. Any questions?
Are these, will the decks then become living space, like become enclosed?
Some of them may be. And this is why, and again, it isn't unique to White Pines and it isn't unique to condominiums, but sometimes people put on small additions like decks and then enclose them and then don't get a building permit. This procedure really kind of formalizes that really more so than you might have for any residential home. And I know from my own experience that, that people sometimes do that. They'll, they'll have a deck and they'll enclose it and they'll never go get a building, they'll never go get a building permit. Within the condominium regime, you can't really do that because in order to build a deck, you're building into the common area. So you have to go to the condominium association. You have to apply for what's called a limited common area agreement to be able to use that space. The condominium building committee then needs to approve your design. There's a whole design process to make sure that these additions are in harmony with the rest of the units. And one of the requirements that a condominium would have that you might skip if you're an individual homeowner is, no, you can't build anything without a building permit. So we want you to come back with a building permit in order to be able to even put on a small deck. And I think that actually provides a level of protection, more so than, you know, you see in, in places where, you know, a deck can get put on and then a few years later, someone encloses that deck and a few years later, someone then puts in electric heat in that deck and the next thing you know, the next time the assessor goes out, there's a whole new room on the house.
Yeah.
And this, this procedure is something that I think Ned was very diligent about in terms of not wanting these additions to be built without a building permit, which would have been inappropriate, but also making sure that he was within his, you know, sort of general authority in terms of issuing such building permits. So talking through town council in terms of what the parameters of that discretion might be and what Ned's own comfort level would be in terms of exercising that discretion, we came up with this five hundred square foot per unit kind of guideline that we've put into the, into the letter that I sent.
Okay, so first, five hundred under, association would either deny or approve it.
Right, and then.
And that can issue the building permit.
Right.
If it's over five hundred, then it's a special permit.
And then if it's over five hundred, it's complicated because it's potentially an amendment to the existing special permits. And, and that, as you know, given the notice requirements and all the procedural requirements go around that is, is a heck of a process. So for someone who's just putting on a small deck, we didn't want them to go through that. And quite frankly, it's very unlikely that the association would allow, the condominium would allow a more substantial addition without a whole lot of discussion because it would likely not pass their building committee requirement in terms of it being in harmony with the rest of the condominium. It, you know, that kind of addition would also put out of balance the condominium unit assessments because they're all based upon their square footage. So, you know, it gets really, really complicated if one individual unit owner all of a sudden wants to put on a fairly large addition. So we want, you know, for a couple of reasons, that seems unlikely to us, but much more likely is people have wanted to put on a deck.
And town council and that are okay with this?
Yeah, so we've already reviewed this, spoken to town council. So the decision in front of the board is that it would be then the board, not a substantial change that could be done without the need to modify the special permit. You could put guidance on there such as, you know, that the expansion is something that would be otherwise allowed by law, right? So if for some reason, one of the condos was within a setback or something, then it wouldn't be able to be done that way. But, and I don't think looking at it.
He couldn't issue, he couldn't issue the building permit anyway, however the case.
So, uh, oh, it's without a need to modify the special permit. But it's the decision of this board whether you believe this is just a modest increase, that this modest increase is insubstantial and therefore doesn't require.
I kind of wish it was.
I just had a question, just for clarification, because I may not be understanding. So do the current owners of the condominiums, so are they a part of the White Pines Condominium Association or under the jurisdiction of the town of Stockbridge? Like, so this five hundred, how do we know it's only five hundred? Is it, will you go out and measure? Do we? Does Ed go bill, measure it? Like?
You're, you're under both jurisdictions. Your, your first jurisdiction would be the condominium trust. But remember, then we're applying for a building permit. Building permit is gonna say, we're building a deck that's, you know.
So they're not just asking to you?
They're coming to us.
Passing us?
Asking us whether or not they could put on the deck. We say, yes, it's in harmony. We like the materials. We like the look. We're gonna give you permission to do it. One of the conditions of that permission is now you have to go to the building inspector and get a building permit. And that's where Ned would look at the sketch plan and say, oh yeah, this is a small addition. Based upon your action tonight, I can issue a building permit. And then, of course, you know, I'm, I'm not sure with a small deck how much, you know, it's not like you have the, the electrical inspector, anybody go back. It's just the, the building inspector at that point, make sure the footings are poured properly, et cetera. And then it's done. So that's, there's really that two, two-step process.
They build a deck that could approve the build a deck in two years, they close it, they gotta go through the same process.
Same process again. And anytime.
Permit. If it's electrical, they give a permit.
And anytime they touch the property, you know, one of the things that the condominium association wants to be very diligent about is that no one of these units modified without a building permit, because that really puts the condominium at risk in terms of, you know, if something fails, whether it's a common area expense, house insured, so.
How would they modify them without a building permit?
Because a lot of people build decks around the county without building permits.
Oh, yeah. That may be, but that's not, yeah.
And, and, and this kind of, this really comes up, you know, quite honestly, because of the internal policing that the condominium association is doing and really demanding a building permit. And that sort of brought the issue to head with Ned in really saying, I think I can issue a building permit because we, I remember discussing this over the years, I just don't wanna do it without, you know, basically the action we're having tonight.
Can I, I have a couple of comments and questions. One, I think White Pines is a beautiful, I think David Rossing did a fantastic job. It's a beautiful development. You know, one, not concern, but question I would have is the current, as I understand, there's an architectural committee that like reviews these sorts of designs. You know, there's both standalone homes, there are, you know, what, two or four up units. There's a lot of, there's a lot of, not different, there's similarly three different layouts that they have. And, and one concern I would have is that this is a forever grant that we're making. And while today's architectural committee may be really diligent at protecting the abutting homeowners to these little clusters of homes, I don't know that we can guarantee forever that that private, you know, condominium association policing is gonna be there. And I wanna make sure that there's a, a, a way to ensure the integrity, if you will, of the decision in perpetuity if this is something we're gonna grant. And one question I would have, for example, is, is, you know, Dave designed three types of units. Are there a handful of designs we could pre-approve, for example, that might be in, in, that might be in, in harmony with the existing design that would protect in perpetuity all those homeowners? Because what I don't wanna have happen is in ten years down the road, someone decides they're gonna put in, you know, something frankly this precious, you know, surrounding homeowners concerned.
Five hundred, a fifth, five hundred square foot limitation.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I think Gil, Gil Silman is on as one of our trustees and maybe she could talk a little bit. But, but I think generally, my, my comment on that would be, first off, we're delegating to the building inspector discretion. Okay? We're not, you're not, you're not directing him to do anything. I don't think at this level you really can. All we're really doing is creating a lane within which the building inspector can exercise his discretion. Okay? So, and I, and I have said to the trustees, because we are actually modifying the special permit to create like a building envelope, this decision always is at the mercy of whoever the building inspector would be at that time. And all we're really doing is giving a lane within which the current building inspector can exercise his discretion. We think it's a pretty tight lane. So the reality of the situation is in ten or fifteen years, you know, a different building inspector may actually take a different view, a more narrow view. And, and that would really compel us to come back in and, and, and look for a special permit. So I think that there's, there's inherently built into it still, you know, that kind of safeguard where the building inspector can say, no, I'm not saying it's in disharmony and it's beyond the scope of the special permit because of its size. I'm saying it because, you know, you're, you're building it out of some bizarre material and it's completely not in harmony with the rest of the property. And therefore, because of that fact, as the building inspector, I'm saying it's not, it's more than a, an incidental change in the, in the underlying special permit. So I get your point, but I think it's already built into the soup here in terms of the limitation of the size and the fact that this isn't a direction that he has to, it's only authority that he can.
Yes. No, he'd look in if he denies, he denies it, approves it, approves it. It gives him authority to do.
We're not talking about a hundred or hundred foot deck here. Five hundred square feet is what the size of this room. I mean, you've got four units on top of each other and I just, and Gail, I would love to hear your thoughts on, on how you ensure there's harmony between, you know, the, the, you know, within each footprint, you know, someone who wants to put five hundred feet on the end of their house and their neighbors, you know?
So, so it's a great question. And we take, you know, the design and the maintenance of White Pines very seriously. There's a lot of attention given, not, not only to the size, but let's say the color of every unit. Last year, we went through painting each sections of the various modules and we wanted to make sure that they had respectful colors, that they were consistent with each other, you know, for the value of the units and just the overall beauty of the unit. We are very careful in terms of allowing for any kind of modifications that are all different and in keeping with the units. So that's why we have, we have within our own rules and regulations, there are strict rules in terms of what the owners can do. Then they have to submit it to an architectural committee. It's really now called the building plant community. And the committee sits down and reviews it and then it goes to the board. So there's a lot of different levels to review this. And it's, it's not in White Pines' interest to allow a proliferation of buildings that are not, that don't fit beautifully within the community.
Okay. I, I, oh, Michael.
So legal counsel did say that, you know, the board could provide, as was pointed out, we could have different building inspectors, that you could provide some guidance as to what types of expansion would be allowed by right and wouldn't require the modification. But, or you could just say, as long as it's less than five hundred could be the only condition or?
I think you definitely police in the early good up there to begin with. So I have no issue with.
Yeah. I, I don't have any issue. The, the chair of the planning board, the original permit from nineteen eighty-two was a close, you know, collaboration between Jack Spencer and, and the secretary at the time, I think it was Bianca, was the chair. And, and the chair of the planning board would like to put this on the agenda for the planning board on November fifteenth. I am inclined to support it too, and they are not, this is a decision-making body. But I think, I think that, I think they should have a chance to express their thoughts on it and, and make a recommendation back to us. So if it's okay with you, I would like to, you know.
Is that, is that, you okay with her?
I mean, we got that request.
Yep.
Okay.
I think we, we have one, and I'm not even sure who the unit owner is, but we have one unit owner who's really been all summer long wanting to put on their deck. You know, if there's any way we could, we could give Ned kind of the thumbs up for that first.
Or just one deck.
Already been in. And, and maybe Gail, is it, I forget who it is, may even be yours, Gail. I don't know who's it is.
Yeah, it, actually, it is my deck.
Yeah.
I can start that.
It's gone, it's gone through this whole process.
The ironic thing is, the deck is gonna be a mirror image of my neighbor's deck. So when they built these units, they did not build similar decks.
It's like, oh, is it problematic if we grant this one?
It may be.
I would be a little concerned about allowing something if you're now making a decision on.
We're gonna wait.
Are we kind of past construction season or do you actually think you could start now?
Yeah, I think that they, the Tony Amorad wanted to, to start and get the helios in the ground before it gets really frozen.
When's the next planning board meet?
She wants to put on November fifteenth. There's one on the first, but, you know.
And right now, you're slated to meet the tenth only in November.
I mean, it's the exact same, pretty much, you know, configuration of my next door neighbors.
The problem is you've requested that for the board to make a determination that allowing that to do this is not a substantial change, a special permit.
Could, could we, could you, could you entertain a motion that says you're, you are approving it conditioned upon the, the planning board approving at their meeting? So we don't have to wait for your next meeting?
Well, they don't approve anything, though.
Well, the, the planning board indicating their positive recommendation, however you wanna phrase it. So you don't actually, so we don't, I don't actually have to come back to you for another meeting and another vote.
But what if they wanna condition a way that we don't agree with? I mean, it's, it's only a month, guys, and you're looking for a change to, what, sixty-two units? I think we should let, the, the last per, special permit took, what, twelve, eighteen months of negotiations between all the parties. I realize this is much smaller than converting music in into White Pines, but I, I, I mean, honestly, just give us a month so we can kind of, you know, accommodate you. I don't think you were hearing a whole lot of projections at the board here, but I do wanna respect the, you know, the, the input from the planning board just because of the scale of what we're talking about, if that's okay.
How were the other ones done before?
They were just done. I mean, no one, no one, no one. You know, honestly, to Gail's, Gail's credit, we're probably here because when she went through the, her, you know, the, the White Pines review process, she was more diligent with her own application than people have been historically since, you know, the eighties, whenever this thing was first built. And, you know, people have become way more attentive to these sorts of things. And so, you know, this, this, this is the process that we find ourselves in. And I, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm here asking, so.
You know, I, I understand. I understand you wanna be respectful of, you know, your other.
Your other boards and, and I understand that. I'm just trying my best to move.
Can we ask Marie?
I mean, is there anything that?
Do we have any hands up? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Well, Marie's on from planning board.
Oh, yeah. Hi, Marie. Do you wanna say something?
Well, she'd be speaking as Marie. You've got the question, the chairman.
Yeah. I gotta request the chairman to put on our November fifteenth agenda. I really think we need to take the three or four weeks it's gonna take. You know, there's a chance we'll have another meeting in November. If we get a, I don't think we'll get a recommendation back necessarily like the fifteenth or sixteenth and the first meeting in December. You know, I'm happy to expedite getting on the agenda and hopefully the ground won't be too frozen. Is that, is that something you can live with, Gail?
I wanna be respectful to the process. So whatever you think is necessary and important to, to move this along, again, it's like we're talking about a tiny deck, but I understand the precedent that you're concerned about. So I respect whatever decision you end up coming up with.
Yep. And, and just, just to be clear, you know, do we, we don't have the, we don't have the plans for this deck. I think that's what we need to do. Is that okay with you? We, you know, give them a chance, so give the planning board a chance as a board to weigh in and then.
You actually do have the plans for this deck. The building permit was given to Ned. He has, he has it, actually.
This, this board hasn't received it because.
Yeah, right.
It's not, yeah. They're trying to clarify that it wouldn't be under the special permit.
All right. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest that we, we, we put it on our first agenda after the fifteenth.
All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest that we, uh, we, we put it on our first agenda after the 15th. Is that okay with you guys?
So when can you actually put a deck in? Just, I, 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 I have to ask that question in terms of like, is there a point where the ground is just so frozen that?
You gotta, you gotta to. Thing on the weather, end of December, mid-January, for the ground's too frozen. But once he gets the footings in the ground, any nice day in the winter, they can work on it.
So can it be closer to like November then and not like push, can we do that?
Well, we only have one meeting because the second, the fourth Thursday in November is Thanksgiving. So we only have one meeting in the books for November. That's the problem.
Why can't the planning board meet, do this on the first?
Because it's on the 15th agenda, that was the chair.
I mean, I want to, at least they came and I appreciate that they're being honest and.
Yeah.
And now we're asking them to wait.
Can I, I, I'm gonna come up with a crazy idea. I don't know that you need a building permit to put in footings.
Yeah, that's all we want to do, is put up our footings in.
I mean, I, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to get anybody crazy and I don't want to do something that drives anybody, you know, uh, makes anybody angry.
Check, check the building inspector.
But I, I, I think if we were able to give the building inspector, you know, the indication that, you know, we're heading in this direction, if we can get the footings in so that we're not fighting weather, um, and then the deck itself can be, can be built later. I, I really don't even think you need a building, a permit to put a.
I don't have any problem with that, but if the planning board comes back with conditions that White Pines can't accept, then it's your risk, not ours. This isn't until we approve it.
I'm just trying to help you get moving, Gail, and it's.
I'm happy to take the risk of having to pull my helios or whatever they're called in the ground.
All right, so Michael's gonna work with that and see if we're gonna accommodate that, and let's continue this.
I, I think, I think that that's probably a helpful compromise so that, you know, we get these things in the ground so we don't lose the whole winter.
Those.
The cement things in the dirt.
Not even concrete, you're putting those auger things in the ground, correct?
Big screw.
Not even a foundation, it's just not even a.
So if some reason doesn't work, you just unscrew them out.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's even simpler. I thought it was one of those plastic things that you fill with concrete. Good. So, so timing wise, am I, are we already on that November 15th agenda?
That's why it was indicated to me, I don't, we don't do those agenda, that agenda, but it was indicated to me that it would be on the November 15th.
So we'll check in on that, and then your first meeting will be sometime early in December.
Be the, the second Tuesday, second Thursday. We meet on Thursdays, I just realized. Second Thursday in December. And we, we likely will only have one meeting in December as well, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, sounds great. Thank you, Gail. All right, appreciate it, thank you all.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Bye now. Yeah, oh, sorry, uh, yes, Ron Rucker.
Did I hear 62 units? At White Pines, is that how many of that?
Maybe Gail knows offhand, I don't know the exact number of units.
Gail, are you here? I'm asking the number of units.
65 is my understanding.
Okay, even more. Why?
Times 500 square feet, that's over 31,000 square feet of addition.
Yeah.
Because, you know.
I know. That's why we're, that's why we're gonna look at it.
You know, it's.
But it's per unit, right?
I know it's a lot, but it's, you know, it's not one big mess or.
Right, it's, it's one individual unit is the.
Additional tax assessment, think of it that way.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
You're right.
All right, so next, uh, Michael, you're coming back with the chime tower?
Yep.
All right. Michael, Michael Canales will be back in a moment where we're going to announce the chime tower award. Can anyone juggle? No, are there any entertainment? I don't know. There's a lot of small towns, all right, anyways.
I'd like to thank the highway department for starting Boogoo.
Starting what?
The highway department has started Boogoo.
Oh, excellent.
So hopefully that gets finished before the snow.
And they did a, they did a great job with the Josh, I think we mentioned it before, right before the Josh, uh, he was out there doing his amazing work, so it was good.
I'm so glad I had a park there. You know how happy I am to be a part of things.
We were gonna do like one of those flying ramps to get him over the thing, yeah.
But even that mode, the place looks nice, it's just open, you know, with the tree lines and.
This is only taking about one minute.
What's that?
There's some water out there now.
Oh, there's wet spots now. A month ago, there wasn't any, that was a lot of wet spots. That's a pretty small parsha for that big field.
Yeah, it is, it's gonna take a toll on that tractor.
Why don't we, um, uh, I see Peter and Tom waiting patiently. Let's promote you guys up right now because this will be a reasonably quick discussion, I think. Is it okay with you guys? I'm gonna move, I'm gonna move you guys up now. Hi, Peter. Peter is now the co-chair pilot along with Tom. So, uh, you know, uh, the pilot committee had a meeting and I don't know if you want to talk about that first?
Sure, uh, thank you, I'm Tom Stokes, 51 Interlake and Road. And I am currently the co-chair of the pilot committee, which stands for payment in lieu of taxes. We've been going on now for a good five years trying to get this off the ground. But given the pandemic and that the not-for-profits were all struggling financially, we've put the project on hold several times. And we've even debated whether the not-for-profits are sufficiently recovered to re, uh, restart the project. But we think, we're eager to get this project done. So the process of the pilot committee is essentially to come up with a recommendation for, for this board of selectmen to institute a pilot program in Stockbridge. And this doesn't need a town vote, but in, in our earlier thinking, we thought it might be good to have an advisory town vote, but it's not legally binding. But what a pilot program would do is to set a protocol for not-for-profits, who would set guidelines. Because right now, there's a huge disparity between some not-for-profits give generously and a larger portion give nothing. And we want to sort of establish some guidelines where the board of selectmen can negotiate with individual not-for-profits to see if they're willing to have a, to sign up for a pilot program. And if you excuse me, I'll just give a little bit of background. Where we've looked quite a bit about other pilot programs in the state and in the county. As far as Berkshire County, we would set a precedent here. The other towns that have a lot of not-for-profits, towns like Lennox or Williamstown, are not interested right now in a pilot program. But we feel in Stockbridge, you know, the committee feels it would be, it's worth pursuing. As I say, it's not legally binding, but we sort of set some guidelines for the program, which then the board of selectmen would, would negotiate individually for, for pilot agreements, typically five or 10 years. The most successful pilot program is in Boston. And it, and it has raised millions of dollars in Boston. And it happens that the BSO has signed a pilot agreement with Boston, which should bode well for Stockbridge. In the Boston pilot program, the not-for-profits, the guideline is to agree to pay half of what they would normally pay were they a regular taxpayer. And of that half, they can use a half of that, namely a quarter, for public services that they provide. So the not-for-profits would be asked to contribute at least a quarter of what they would pay in lieu of taxes and then demonstrate that the other quarter, they were actually providing for the citizens of Stockbridge. One aspect of this pilot program that's important to us is input from the second homeowners. Because the second homeowner is, as everybody knows, pays a good portion of the taxes here in Stockbridge. And they also are very influenced by the cultural amenities of Stockbridge. So we want to get input from second homeowners as well, not just citizens of Stockbridge.
How do you men plan to do?
Well, we have Peter Strauss, who's with me now, is co-chair. And he's, he's now a full-time resident, but has been a second homeowner for, for a long, long time. And we're, we're welcoming input, let's put it this way. And one of the things we've spent quite a little bit of effort on is developing a questionnaire. And we just started distributing it, but then we're just simply not getting responses, and that was because of the pandemic. So we've put everything on hold, revising the questionnaire. The questionnaire will go to all the not-for-profits, we'll send it to them. Then we'll follow up with the not-for-profits for a discussion with them. Any questions? We, we really want input, we want a, a collaborative atmosphere. It's not like we're gonna get the, the not-for-profits, but we recognize that, you know, we all benefit from town services. We all benefit from the not-for-profits, what they add to the community. And to establish a collaboration equity and frankly, revenue that we feel the town should be getting. Peter, would you like to add anything to what I've said?
Just, just a little bit, um, I'll, I'll say it's really a pleasure to work with you, Tom. One is to acknowledge that in fact, many organizations have been making payments in lieu of taxes for quite a number of years, and, and they show up in the town records, uh, under the designation pilot. But I think that it hasn't involved a program of the nature, a, a kind of formalized program of the nature that Tom's described to you. I agree with Tom, the Boston effort is really quite successful and, and impressive. Boston tells people what it hopes that they will pay, uh, and they get a fairly high percentage of return, but it remains voluntary. Uh, and so 50%, 70% uh, of this kind of institution or that kind of institution, uh, is received, but it's excellent. Williamstown and Lennox do not have pilot programs, in part because they provide a lot of direct services to their nonprofits, uh, and they're paid for those direct services. And of course, that is also an alternative for Stockbridge, which in some instances, I, I understand the town, uh, the town follows.
Michael, can I ask?
I'll just add one other thing and then.
She can, just a point order. I, I just realized, I, and I apologize to, uh, to the, uh, the town for not asking this before the meeting. I work for a nonprofit, should I recuse myself in your opinion from this discussion?
Yeah, you shouldn't.
Okay, so I'm gonna recuse myself and I apologize for not doing it sooner and, you know, leave it up to you two.
Go ahead, Chuckie.
Okay. I just, one thing I'll say is, I want to make clear that the pilot committee is not going to be negotiating with the not-for-profits for a pilot commit, for an agreement. That will be the job of the board of selectmen. We will talk with them, we'll answer questions from the questionnaire, we'll get their input, we'll get a sense of what's important to them in the terms of town services. We'll get a sense from them of what they would put forward as their contributions in, in lieu of paying cash, but in terms of providing benefits to Stockbridge. But that will all sort of go into our report. It'll be up to the board to like. Negotiate the, a pilot agreement and to enforce, you know, and to, yes, Peter.
No, I was just gonna say, a good example of that sort of thing was Tanglewood's contribution, as it were, of parking in Lions Gate for the Josh.
I'm sorry, Peter, I didn't quite hear what you said.
A good example of the provision of things that benefit the town was, was Tanglewood's agreement to provide parking in their Lions Gate parking lots for the Josh, which is an.
Exactly.
An event which brings, brings in thousands, maybe tens of thousands, maybe more.
That they have, Tanglewood over the years has hosted portions of the ceremonies and what have you for the Josh, and that is an example. Any questions? Chuck or anyone else?
How do you figure the assessed taxes, assessed value of these properties?
Pardon?
How does that, the assessment of what they would pay in taxes?
So all, all properties have an evaluation, an assessment, whether it's not-for-profit or profit. So if it's a not-for-profit organization, we would, you know, we, we would suggest that they consider donating half of what they would pay if they were a regular taxpayer. So it's not, uh, the data is, is out there, it's pretty concrete. And, uh, you know, that's our goal to get half. Are we gonna get there? No, but we'll get as close as there we can and engage as many not-for-profits as we can. Uh, I do have to say that a number of communities have been notably unsuccessful in implementing their pilot program. For instance, Northampton has a fairly ambitious pilot program. They've had a very good connections with Smith College, but other not-for-profits have been less willing to donate. So, uh, you know, is, we think it's worth a shot. And it would be a, sort of a guideline of, some kind of a tool that the select board would have when they would ask to meet with the leadership of the different not-for-profits. And as I say, that report will be informed by not only our questionnaire, but our interviews that will follow the questionnaire.
That's my understanding, you're an advisory to the select board.
Correct, yes.
And do you have a timetable of when you would get this questionnaire out and the information back and?
I, I think Peter, who is graciously donating quite a lot of time to this project and is also an excellent editor of the draft questionnaire we've done. And I and the rest of the committee are eager to get the questionnaire out this fall, have responses back by the early next year, be able to conduct interviews during the winter and have a report by the time of our next annual town meeting. So we'd like to have our work done during this fiscal year.
Any questions from anybody? Out there?
So I think just the final thing is, is I think it's important to us that we continue to have the support of the board of selectmen and, and, you know, we, it's quite a lot of effort on our part and we want to, some assurances that when we do the report, uh, you know, you'll have a chance to see drafts, to comment on drafts. But we want this work to be taken seriously, so. And I think every, every indication we've had so far is that you do, and we would like to thank you for that.
Could I add one thing in that respect? Previously, uh, the, the committee had a representative of the select board on it. She's not currently a member of the select board, Roxanne McCaffrey, but she remains on the committee. I think we would welcome either of you to the, to the committee if either of you thought that it would be useful to you to be on it.
I, something like this, I think, might better off leaving us out of it.
Oh, that's fine.
I will say that.
Oh, because you're gonna be reporting to us, giving everything to us. You feel like every time you put a select board on these boards, it's almost like you feel like I'm spying.
You guys, you guys do, you guys do an extraordinary amount of, of, of service to the town. I didn't, I wasn't meaning to put an additional burden on your shoulders, but given the past record, it seemed, it seemed important to say the opportunity was there.
And Roxanne's still on the committee?
Roxanne is still on the committee.
You got a very good committee, and I think. You've got a very good committee, and I think keep doing the work you're doing without, you know, somebody else going in there and kind of.
Okay, well, thank you, Chuck. I will say that Mike has been a very helpful attending our meetings.
Mike's involved in everything.
Officially part of the committee, but his input is very valued. And Mike, by the way, knows a lot about pilot committees. When he was working in Northampton, Northampton was, excuse me, North Adams. North Adams was seriously considering a pilot program. He's done a lot of research on it, is very familiar with the Boston model. So he's been very helpful, and thank you, Mike.
Thank you for the hard work you're doing. Do appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
All right then. I didn't know what pilots stood for, so I'm sorry to take me so long to recue. Just kidding. All right, so let's now, we'll go to the chime over in a second. Let's do the money amount one, because you've got Beth Mills here from Berkshire Natural Resources, and she's got a long drive home, possibly. So why don't you guys come up? This is Jeff Bradway from the Land Trust, Mary Burley. What? Oh, Rich Bradway. I always do that to you. I went to high school with Jeff. I went to high school with Jeff. Yeah, you guys look kind of alike, what can I say? I'm still flustered from the pilot thing. Come on up anyway. Yes.
Are you going to say anything to start?
You know, the, as we all know, a longtime resident, Clover Swan passed, and we'd like to offer condolences to her family. There's been some discussions with the family in the past week or so where they've expressed a very strong interest, the heirs to that state, that the land is conserved. And there's a lot of stakeholders who might participate in that conservation effort from organizations like the BNRC. Mass Wildlife has expressed a strong interest in it because of the fact that it's got, it's one of the most important tracks, in their opinion, the entire state to protect because of these eight biomaps that it contains. There's a lot of stakeholders and a lot of moving parts, but we just wanted to kind of update the town in terms of what some of these efforts are. Doesn't directly impact the town yet in terms of like its participation, but nevertheless, I thought it was important enough to really brief my colleagues and have a chance to have a conversation around it.
Great, okay, thank you, Patrick. My name is Mary Burley, and I'm from Two Sky Farm Road in Stockbridge, and actually was born and raised, lived my whole life at Sky Farm, which is the, and the Swan family has been our closest neighbor for that entire time, through three generations. And I just wanted to thank Jamie, Chuck, and Patrick for talking about this opportunity this week. And there's two things I want to talk about, and then both Beth Mills and Rich Bradway will have a lot more to say about some of the details. But first, I want to talk a little bit about the property and how special it is. This is the view from Park Street and Ice Glen. It's 355 acres that is teeming with wildlife. And my personal experience is that when I was little, there were no coyotes, there were no turkeys, there were no bears, and there were no eagles on Monument Mountain. And in my lifetime, all of those species have come back in extraordinary ways. So in the 1980s, when we saw the first turkeys, we actually called UMass Extension. It was such an exciting moment. And more recently, it's been the bears. We've also seen, I think Mass Wildlife might not agree with us, but the Swans and we would say that there have been lone wolves and lone mountain lions on the mountain as well. And last year, I'm sure that I saw mountain lion tracks. So it's a remarkable property. It's one of the last big properties in Stockbridge that has this opportunity for protecting the landscape. And I think the second part is what I want to, so, and I don't need to be the one that explains that. Anybody who has walked on Monument Mountain or even driven along Cherry Hill Road will have stories to tell about the wildlife. And Mass Wildlife has all the data in terms of what's actually there. But I think, you know, we all know that the Stockbridge Muncie Indians are the first stewards of this land. There's another, there's an additional story to tell about the Swan family. And I think it's worth knowing as we go into negotiations potentially about preserving this property. In 1889, John Butler and Helen Butler, John Butler Swan and Helen Butler gave Monument Mountain reservation to the trustees. They also gave the Laurel Hill property. In the 1930s, they owned 1,200 acres on Sky Farm, and their history of stewardship is nothing short of extraordinary. The Norman Rockwell Museum was a cousin that Linwood Estate Cousins lived there, and they had an option to put 12 houses on that property. And when the Norman Rockwell Committee, looking for a new site for the museum in 1986, was looking for, looking for a place for the museum, the family took a fraction of what they could have gotten had they developed it to make a place for the museum. More recently, in 1980, that was 1986, more recently, in the mid 90s, Clover Swan, who was an incredible member of the Stockbridge Land Trust, and did many, many, many things. But one of the really huge things she did is she worked with my father, Peter Burley, who was the president of the Land Trust. They were active together and really worked hard on a lot of things. But they, Clover negotiated selling a big portion of their property to Mass Wildlife at that time. So this 355 acres is what's left of the mountain. And currently, BNRC, the trustees, and Mass Wildlife all have different stakes in preserving parts of the mountain, and all of them would like to come together to help protect this last piece. I think, I know there are people in town who really care about development. There are also two eight-acre, two or three, three eight-acre parcels that are not part of this parcel. And so I think for those people who are concerned about that opportunity, there is opportunity for development. But this 355 acres is extraordinarily special, and it would, I think, cement the legacy of this family who has cared for so many generations. And I think we also realistically know that it's the end of the Swan family's presence in town, and the next generation does need remuneration for the property. So it's going to take a very coordinated effort. Matt Riley, who is Rosalie Swan, the oldest of the last generation's son, is managing the sale. And he has shared with us that the highest priority of the family is to preserve this tract because of its ecological significance. And so I think we just want everybody to know that that's a conversation, and it would be a wonderful way to continue the incredible legacy of the family, but also the commitment to making Stockbridge a place that is a wonderful place to live for people and also welcoming to animals and wildlife. So that's, and Rich, I think you have something to say about from the Land Trust perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, Mary. Hi, Jeff.
Hi. My name is Rich Bradway. I come to you as a town resident and also the president of the Stockbridge Land Trust. I'm fairly new to the role. I've been on the Land Trust for a number of years, but this is my first time for, into being the president. As Mary alluded to you, Clover Swan is, was a longstanding, not only trustee on the board of the Land Trust, but she served as secretary for over 20 years. And she worked very actively with Mary's father, Peter, as she mentioned, to acquire, to ensure that a good chunk of that land was conserved and protected for future generations. About a month ago, we had our annual meeting, and coinciding with our annual meeting, we offered to send out an appeal, an annual appeal. And at our annual meeting, I spoke about Clover and her dedication to the Land Trust and to the lands that she loved, so loved. What I have since discovered, since that time, is that a number of residents in town have reached out to me that, and this is before we knew that the land was going to be put up for sale, expressed a deep interest in ensuring that Clover's heritage, Clover's memory and her desire to see the lands of the town be preserved could be ensured going forward. So the Land Trust is working to set up a campaign to create an opportunity for anybody, town residents or whomever, to donate to the Stockbridge Land Trust. The Land Trust is, just to give you a little background on what the Land Trust, who the Land Trust is, we're a nonprofit organization in town. We hold approximately 20 conservation restrictions on lands in and around Stockbridge, many of which are co-held with the Berkshire Natural Resources Council. And our job is to ensure that those lands that are placed in conservation restriction, the specifications of those restrictions are enforced every year. In exchange for having conservation restriction placed on one's land, people not only ensure the fact that that land is conserved and protected, but also provides them an opportunity, a sort of a tax break on their real estate burden. So what I wanted to just say is that we are deeply interested and committed to helping out where this Land Trust can in, with respect to ensuring that this property is protected. We are actively working as part of a larger consortium of organizations that are looking to conserve and protect these lands, and we are very happy to help out where we can. And we hope that for the people who are listening in today, that they might consider making a donation to the Land Trust so that we can assist as we can in making sure that this land is protected. So with that, I will hand it over to Beth.
Thank you.
This is Beth Mills from the Berkshire Natural Resources Council.
That's not, it's just. It doesn't? Oh, okay. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me here and letting me address you. Yeah, this is a really important piece of land, and we've recognized that at Berkshire Natural Resources Council since, for a long time, in working with Mass Wildlife and with other landowners in that general area because of the richness of the habitat, the scenic values, and the connectivity that that land provides for climate resiliency and wildlife movement. So we were very interested in supporting this effort when we heard about it and have been offering our assistance in any way possible that is possible for us to help out and lend expertise if that's needed for any, in any aspect of the work in the transaction, or any other sort of supportive work that we can give to, as long as we're all working together to ultimately see this land conserved. That's, we're on board for that, and we share that goal and have thought about that for a long time. So the opportunity to actually act on it when, in collaboration with our partners, is very exciting to us. And we especially are cognizant of supporting all the local land trusts in Berkshire County. That's a big part of our role as more, as the whole more regional land trust and sort of the bigger organization for Berkshire County. Our relationships with the local land trusts are very important. We have partnerships with the local land trusts all over the county, and we, those relationships are important. So we're happy to be here to lend our support and as things progress, to lend our expertise and capacity in whatever way is appropriate to see, ultimately see the land conserved.
Just so people listening in country of Ron, this is the mountain behind, like Williams's gravel pit.
Yeah.
Behind Agawam Swamp.
Behind Donovan's.
The lake, all the way to your property.
Well, no.
Almost to your property.
Actually, it's a really good question, Chuck. The left side of Sky Farm Road is Ice Mountains. The right side is, is our family.
Yeah, and so the buildable lots are off of Sky Farm Road to the left.
And across the street.
And a little bit, but it's down in that area, the buildable lot. What we're trying to protect is the mountainside, Agawam Lake and the swamp. And I just want, so people understand what we're, exactly what we're talking about.
I think Patrick may be able to speak to this more than I can, but my understanding is that the buildable lots for sale in the eight-acre parcels are off of Cherry Hill Road.
Okay. And one is on the other side.
And one is the.
Clover's actual house was.
Yeah, okay.
One of them is the beginning of Sky Farm Road. As you get into Sky Farm Road, you start to hit this and also the bio.
The swamp and.
The wildlife.
Yeah. So people don't know exactly what we're.
Yeah, so it's really more on Sky Farm Road. The other piece, I would say, is that once you get to the S-turn on Sky Farm Road, it is extremely steep and dangerous if it really is a one-way road.
So.
Good night.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to say that the, and this is just, I am certainly no expert. This is information I learned the last few weeks. The way these acquisitions are often structured are to execute an option, which would be a percentage of the sale price of the lot, and then give the players, especially the, you know, government players, like the state and federal government, some time to go through the appropriation process to actually do the acquisition. So in this case, there is a number that the family has shared with us that would cover an option to tie the land up, you know, for long enough to allow in fiscal year '24 for the state to participate. And so that's not up to the town, that's up to the owners of the property, obviously. But that number has been shared with us. So I just want to let you know that it's not, it's a standard way that these types of conservation efforts happen, where there's a lot of different stakeholders and players involved, and that those discussions are already underway on how to fund that option. So.
And I think, should we mention all the stakeholders that have come to the table?
I think it's great.
Yeah, so importantly, the Stockbridge Muncie Indians, the trustees of reservation, BNRC, the Stockbridge Land Trust, Mass Wildlife.
Laurel Hill.
Laurel Hill Association, trustees have all come to the table to say, yes, they want to participate, and they care.
Or at least someone will.
And I think I mentioned you right up. And so I think we have the potential for a very exciting win for the town. It's a once-in-a-generation opportunity, and we're really eager to make this process as positive and straightforward as possible. And I think that with BNRC's support and their expertise in doing these kinds of deals, that will, that will be possible. I also forgot to mention that St. Paul's Church, and I think, St. Paul's Church was also built by Clover's grandfather. So it's, our whole town has been shaped by this family, and it's pretty exciting to think about making this possible now.
I just want to share also, thank you, Mary, was that the bog, the Agawam bog, is a really special bog in Massachusetts and needs to be protected. I know this from Conservation Commission. So Ron could probably speak on that better than I, but I know that it is a very special bog in Massachusetts.
Yes, in fact, you are so right about that, that the Mass Wildlife has said that this is the most important tract perhaps in the state to save, which is probably what we should have led with, but that's, that's absolutely 100% accurate, Jimmy.
Eight wild, eight endangered species, you know, the calcareous fens, nature of it or something, I don't know what that really means, but yeah, it's wildlife corridors, it's forest, it's wetlands, it, there's something like eight biomaps, according to Pete Melonacy from Mass Wildlife.
Climate resilience.
Climate resilience.
And this family has loved the land, and they've been good stewards, and so to continue, that would be special.
What? Oh, Tom.
Yeah, I have a question, and then I also have a comment, if I may. You want me?
Yeah, sure, just, I can hear you.
The question is, you may have mentioned this, one of you, and I misheard it, but with all this collaboration, who would end up owning the fee of the land? Has that been settled yet?
That is, that is largely up to the stakeholders. I know that Mass Wildlife has expressed an interest in being the eventual owner, but that is, that would largely be up to the players involved, and I don't, I don't believe that that has been determined.
Okay. Just the comment is that, to me, this is, as Marion and Rich and Pat said, this is really a unique opportunity for all the reasons stated, but I wanted to emphasize the precedent here where Stockbridge has really gone to bat to preserve areas. First, in my lifetime, was Gold Meadows, and Ron, you're certainly very familiar with Gold Meadows, and that was a collaboration that was really initiated by BNRC. They went to the Board of Selectmen, they said, this is a unique opportunity to preserve this terrific landscape, northern part of the bowl. There was a fundraising effort, town, we're either state funding, and it ended up becoming town-owned land.
Yeah.
And the other precedent is the Four Corners piece, which was a collaboration between the land trust, between Laurel Hill, towards the Community Preservation Committee, and the Garden Center. And each entity contributed about a quarter of that to preserve that open space. So I think that we have a great history of collaborating on this kind of project, and I'm excited that this effort is being made. So thank you.
I think this is the similar effort for, you know, for, if this is a once in a generational effort, Golden Meadows was kind of, I guess 30 years is around a generation, it's around 30 years ago, and I think that this is a similar effort in terms of an opportunity.
Great, thank you.
Very good for us. Anybody from the public have a comment? Oh, I'm sorry, Michael? Yes?
Not about this, I have a different type of comment.
Pardon me?
I was discussing.
Oh, okay. No, 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 I meant from this topic. Anybody from the public? All right. I'm not sure there's any action item right now, this is really just a chance to brief the town and you guys.
Informative.
Just, I did check, we did check on the status of this property and the rest with the assessor's office after both you and Chuck came and spoke about this. So two things are, if CPA funds can be used for acquiring open space, but the town funds used through CPA, then the town must retain the ownership, but then the town can immediately turn around and put it into Article 97 land. So we would, so if you want to use CPA funds, understand that piece when we're.
Mike, may I add something to that? Because actually, this came up with the Four Corners, where CPA did contribute money, and they don't own the fee of that land.
But what CPA can do is buy the conservation restriction, and that, there is a precedent on that. So it can be owned by Laurel Hill or, you know, any number of organizations, but if the town CPA money is bought to purchase the conservation restriction, then that's a viable, and the town would own the conservation restriction, but that would be a viable use of CPA funding.
We have the interest in the real property.
Pardon?
It was worded as the interest in the real property from legal counsel, so that might be that, because the interest is.
Yeah. We can work out all those details.
Exactly.
Yeah, this gets into, we.
Get to that point first.
Currently in chapter land, the chapter land is set to expire in 2024.
Correct.
Does that mean January?
The town was, Mike was double checking that, Mike Clay. The town's rate of first refusal is 120 days. So if, right now, prior to 2024, if the property is intended to be removed from the chapter land, we would have 120 days to act, the town. And change of ownership does not.
We understand.
Does not change the.
No, this is about the acquisition. We have no indication that the land is coming out of Chapter 61, you know, and that we would therefore be in a position to exercise the Chapter 61 rights we have. This is about conservation.
It is extremely helpful to have these details on the table, because it's the type of process that has to be perfect for it to go bust, so thank you.
All right.
Okay, let's move on.
Anything else? Good. Okay, so let's, thank you. Thank you all for coming in. Michael, you want to go over the chime tower award?
Yep, so the chime tower bids went out for restoration, musical instrument part of the chime tower. I actually had a lot of fun with this one, because normally in procurement, everything's pretty straightforward on how you how you do it, but because this was not a building project, a vertical, wasn't a horizontal, it's actually a musical instrument, that part that's being fixed, I had to go all the way with town council and go all the way to the Attorney General to get asked the question of, how do we bid this? So we were told that we would bid this under a 30B project, so it was put out as a 30B project that was put into COMBI, Central Registry, and notice in paper. We received one bid, it was for Verdun, who we've worked with, who came out and did the original work. The proposal is for $195,175 to do the restoration of the bells, the racking system, and get the instrument into a playable, a better playable state. This was, has been reviewed with the Historical Commission also. The Historical Commission made the recommendation to restore the bells with the 1973 bell, but I know there was a request made to consider adding bells to it, but the Historical Commission wanted the historical kept. So right now, I'm asking if the board authorized me to execute the agreement with Verdun for the the repair of the racking system and the bells.
Any comments or discussion?
I just have one question, which is, I know Lindy Sering is the one person in town who knows that chime tower inside and out, his mother took care of it before him, and is he in the mix here to help? Because he's, he is extraordinary with the chime tower.
Yeah, I know he's very familiar with the building, and we've had.
But also the, also the chimes.
Yeah. I don't know, a lot of, a lot of the, as far as the original documents were all put together, Chris Marsden, and then Chris left, so I took over that part. I know that, you know, this is them engineering a new racking system in order to to make it work correctly. I do know that he's made a bunch of the repairs, like.
I would just recommend, like, he should be kept in the luth, because he's, he's the town, he has done tremendous service to the town, and he's, he uses the crystal to keep it ongoing.
Yeah.
After it's.
All right. That's good to know, and I know the next piece also, this is phase one, so this is 200, and the next phase is actually the copula work and some masonry work, which will be done after we fix the inside, then we're going to fix the copula, and there's just some minor masonry, the masonry overall is in excellent shape, but the copula itself is, and that's my understanding of a lot of what he's done, but maybe, I will, I'll touch base with him.
He volunteered, I mean, he volunteered for over 30 years, I mean, his service is nothing short of extraordinary, and I don't think people have done it.
All right. All right, I'll touch base with him.
I'll make the motion, we allow Mike to award the adjournment to.
Verdun.
Verdun.
A second.
Any discussion, any other discussion on this? Yes, Ron?
This is just repairs to what's already there, is that correct? Or what should be there?
Yeah, it's going to be running new cables for the instrument play itself and a new racking system for the bell. The racking system has, is in need of replacement to keep the bells playable, so.
And I heard you say something about mention of more bells?
No.
We're not going to, yeah.
No, the decision went to the Historical, it's a historical monument, and they immediately agreed to restoring the original bells, and then the, there was a bell added in 1973, I believe it was, the A bell, it was, I forget who was, maybe somebody knows, there was a person that it was dedicated to, and they agreed to keep that in there because it's been in there for, you know, so many years since, but they, they weren't interested in expanding the bells and changing.
Is anyone in town that can play the bells?
All right.
Oh, I thought Mary Hart.
Yeah, no, Claire, Claire doesn't really want to go upstairs anymore.
And Karen Williams.
All right.
But they have to change it to a seven note.
Remember, we got, we got 14 people out here, so if you, if we want to have a conversation, it'd be good if you at least sat a little closer or come up to the, come up to the thing.
Okay.
Rich, did you have any, you raise your hand.
I was just going to ask, are they actually restoring the bells themselves or the racking system of the bells?
The racking, the cables, they'll be removing the bells, cleaning them, and then everything. We'll go back on.
Yep.
All right. Excellent, so we have a motion on the floor, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, excellent. On to the next thing. Okay, then we have a discussion of the Housatonic Water Works. Jamie, you want to talk about that one?
My concern was that we have about 20 residents in Stockbridge at the Housatonic Stockbridge border that receive water from the Housatonic Water Company, but the Stockbridge, our Stockbridge Water Company supplies the piping, but the water comes from the Housatonic Water Company. And I wanted to just sort of make a public announcement if any of them had concerns with their water, the turbidity, you know, the, sometimes there's lack of water because the service will just stop because they're, you know, the pressure will be low, that they should contact Town Hall or just so that we're aware of this. And that was my concern, just that because they may not speak up because they think that they need to reach out to Great Barrington, but I know that's complicated, and they get looped into calling DEP, but since we supply the pipes, I thought it would, and the Board of Health has had a concern about it and reached out to me, so that was my only concern, and I, yeah, so if you have more information, that would be great.
Everybody want to talk about the Housatonic Water? Michael, are you on, are you on the Housatonic Water Works system or no? I know you live down that neighborhood, don't you?
I have my own will.
Oh, you do? Okay. All right then, so next on the agenda is an intersection update. Michael, you had, you shut the van. I don't know.
I wasn't sure who was starting that one. All right. So.
I'm going to put it up.
We had the, we had the meeting, and after the meeting, there was some discussion of that other crosswalk, and Van did up just what would be the impact if you did do that. So I sent around the email. You have the diagram in front of you, and I will throw it up on the screen of what the impact of a mid, if we were to shift it over, what would be the impact? So let me throw it up on.
Yeah, I can't read this, even with my glasses.
I can go get your mine.
You have 10.
I have readers.
10, one for reader.
I'll throw it up on the screen, maybe you can see it up there.
So this is separate from the intersection, we got the grant.
So we're just talking about.
We're moving ahead with this, sidewalks.
We have, we have the grant for, the only grant we have right now is for the crosswalks at Elm.
Yeah.
The two, and Town Hall.
Right, and that's going out to bid.
That's going out to bid. We already have the money for that through the RAP funds and through a shared street grant. Then we have the intersection, and then what we're doing with this mid crosswalk one.
So you're talking about the one by the lost lamb that goes dumps into St. Paul's driveway? That's illegal.
And what this does is show you what.
What do we lose?
What we would lose. Let me zoom in on.
Six parking spots, three parking spots, something like that.
Well, what about the tree? People had, were upset about the tree loss.
One tree's already down.
One tree was down because it was infected. So let me really zoom in. How's that? I think that's a good look. That is that, if we were to shift, you can see.
So the light gray is where it is?
The light gray is currently where it is, and our concern is obviously right up here where it exits into the church walk driveway.
Right, where those little kids go.
Instead of its own, where it needs its own plate and its own piece right here. So if we were to move it over, as you can see, we would end up losing one, two, three, four, five, and then two, the two here, six, seven spots.
Seven spots.
Now, one of the things we could look at is whether or not we have to maintain this bump out at the, at the visitors booth, because right now, because the way that bumps out there, and I'm not sure why it bumps out, maybe Chuck, do you have any idea?
No, I was just.
Because you don't go to the back of the, you don't go behind it, but we created a walkway around it. Yes, Jamie?
What's the triangle here?
That is, just when you redraw in, you can see where there's two spaces.
Okay.
And then there must be a driveway right there.
Oh, okay.
So one of the questions that that's been brought up is right down here, because of this little bump out behind the, behind the tourist booth, if you were to take that bump out, you could restore a number of diagonal spots right there.
You would take those three spots and make them diagonal.
Diagonal, which we probably add five, or at least four.
So you're beginning.
Is the visitor.
Visitors booth.
Does it stick out?
It's a bad, no, it doesn't. It's just like, you can walk around it, and I'm not sure why it was designed to be walked around, because it's only open on the other side. I don't know if one time it was open on both sides, or.
I don't know.
What's that?
For the flower box.
Oh, it's.
It's a flower box?
Oh, all right, thank you.
So if you do that, you're actually.
Can we take the flower box off?
You're only gaining two spots.
Move the, move the flower.
Well, well, that spot is dedicated for.
You're right, you, because there's already three.
Three there, so you're only gaining two spots.
But two's better than none.
It's just a thought that there is a spot where we could gain two back.
The biggest concern was that sidewalk.
We cannot.
That drew the most attention over everything.
Yeah, but we cannot put it into that driveway because the children go to.
No, we got to move it. We either got to eliminate it or we got to move it.
Right.
And I think my opinion of moving it and seeing how it works kind of died.
Oh, you can't do that.
So.
In or out?
I would go with it.
Yeah.
And I think with the feedback we got, the feedback I got personally, feedback I got from our people writing in.
I think it's the best compromise.
You know, we're working on parking elsewhere and stuff, and.
And we have the new parking plan, includes the parking around this building for the weekend, so.
Right.
Yeah, that'll ameliorate a little bit.
I did ask her, and I will get for the next meeting about the cost of putting poles, showing parking.
Yeah.
Doing a nice design.
Good.
And getting those in also for next season.
Thanks, Tom.
Now, is this something we can do as a, what do you call it, a amendment to the bid? Or is something the Highway guys can do?
I'm not sure, I mean, right now, the bid, the bid is just for Elm Street.
Yeah, that's right.
That one. I can ask Van what the cost this would be with the lining, and it might be because we haven't gone out to bid yet, we're going to go out to bid shortly on the Elm, we could add that in, but obviously, we're not going to get any more of a grant, but so far, all that has picked up, so if we were to pick up the.
We can use.
Yeah, I'll say, now that I know from you guys that this is something you want to pursue, I will ask them to get me a price quote, and then what we could do is take care of this Elm in front of Town Hall, and then obviously, we have to go to town meeting or a special town meeting for the intersection.
Oh, yeah, intersection.
But hold on, the question I have is this, at the Finance Committee meeting yesterday, we talked about potentially seeking state infrastructure funds or whatever for this. How do you think that the, first of all, what do you think the, you know, odds are of receiving additional, you know, grants related to this construction? And B, what would be the timing of that? what would be the timing of that, because if we think the chance is low and/or there's not a lot of money there, then we could potentially consider a special town meeting. If we do wanna give you time to solicit a grant, then this would make sense for a Maytown meeting.
Right, so a couple of things, if we wanted to look, it'd either be under, so it's the, the, the state's funded this all for one program where they put all the grants, the mass works, this, the straps and all the others under one, one process, so that process begins in for, so last fiscal year, it was in January, um, but because we already had a mass works grant and two small bridge grants on, Larry wanted one on the Everett Road, we couldn't go after any others, we had to get those cleaned up.
Yep, and clean.
And clean the board.
But we had.
So now, this January coming up, we can apply for the twenty twenty-four funding.
For the intersection?
We could look at the intersection, I was also thinking that we apply for at least a million dollars toward the tuckerman, so.
Potentially for the walkway.
Could be for the walkway.
There's affordable housing there.
Those come out in January, so I think we need to prioritize which ones we wanna go after as far as grants, obviously, we'll get some feedback on what their priorities are and then, uh, try to target which ones, you know, whether or not, what we think we wanna do with this intersection, whether it's, uh, free cash, grants, whatever, we can, we can pursue all of it, but what it'll do is, I wouldn't think this one is not gonna be a high cost, it's mostly painting and a curb cut, so I think you throw it in with that other one and maybe what we go is to cover it through reserve account transfer or something because it hasn't.
If we can't get a grant or something.
Well, we already got, if we put it into this bid, we've already got a state grant, it was a hundred and seventy-five to do these.
Now, talk about the intersection portion though.
Right, but I don't think we put this one in the intersection, I think we can do this one.
Can we do this with the others?
With, with the, with the bid, we haven't gone out yet on Elm.
Oh, I see, so you're talking about the crosswalks?
Yeah.
Yeah. Of all the crosswalks, so I'll ask Van to do up this one to put into the bid for the.
That's fine, I'm talking about when we authorize.
Then, we have the intersection all on its own without the crosswalk being considered.
This wouldn't be under the grant money.
No, so we'd have to, I'd have to.
I'm sure it's not a lot, is this ARPA money cover that?
Yeah, you could use the ARPA, yes, you could use ARPA funds to finish this.
It isn't a major.
Just the crosswalks.
Is that safety?
Yeah, and, and we've got it all paid except for this piece, so.
Yeah, I get it.
I don't, this is almost all painted.
Yeah.
And other than your curb cuts and.
So you wouldn't do the raised.
And then the, and then town meeting, just to clarify though, town meeting would approve the intersection.
Intersection.
Yeah, that's.
Right, yeah, I get it, I get it.
Yeah, we're not discussing.
Making sure everyone understands. Can you take down this chair?
Yeah.
And I would, so I would.
Don't, don't take it down.
I could throw it back up.
Whoa, hi.
Hi, Pat.
Um, yeah, I want to make a comment about the, um, the visitor center, that bump, that little bump out that you talked about, um, the visitor center, when it was originally built and under the aegis of, actually was controlled by and run by a separate nonprofit corporation that I was on and I was secretary of that too, um, but that, that is actually a, a B bus location and the bus that goes to New York stops there too, so I think that's probably why the bump out was put there, because there are two, there are two, um, parallel parking places there and that's where the bus that, that comes to take the, the Halloween lookers up to Namkeg, and that bump out, the parking place in front of that is not actually a parking place, and if you'll notice, it says police on the, it's painted on the ground.
Yeah, they're there when they walk, walk the street.
Yeah, but, you know, I would say that, you know, the, um, whether you really need to have a bus stop there or just like when it comes going the other way, when it's going north or east, it stops just out in the street and people pick it up across the street or out by the, the red light and so.
But it's probably not.
Bus going south stops there, the one going north stops across the street over, over by the library.
But it's probably not worth the money in same aesthetic to gain two parking spots.
Yeah.
Well, I think if you made that, if you made that parallel parking or angled parking, um, you would gain, that whole space, I would imagine you would gain three or four slots.
We already got two there.
But I don't know, why, why do those have to be paral- uh, parallel?
I, we could probably make those parallel. We're looking to, we're looking to that.
Uh, what I'll do is ask Van to figure out what it would take to level that out and then what it would be.
And how many, how many parking spots?
How many parking, would we gain?
Yeah.
And, and see if it's significant enough that now we're gaining back some of the ones that we lost, all right.
Yeah, I think it would be great to take away that, that bump out.
Yeah, as most of the comments we got back, they really have the crosswalk and lose a few parking spots, then lose the crosswalk altogether, so.
Now, I just put that on the, on the part, the.
No, thank you, that was great.
So is this the, is this the, the plan we wanna go forward with, is this, you know, we wanna basically, do you need a motion on the crosswalks or?
Not yet, because I'm still, what I'll probably do is by the next meeting, so we can get the bid documents, so we can get this work done.
All right, good.
Yeah.
All right, any other comments on the, we basically added in the new crosswalk, uh, the old crosswalk, but moved it down a bit. Yeah, okay, uh, great.
We'll hold off the intersection until we find out if we're gonna to grant or not.
Yeah, all right, all right, all right. Anybody else? We got Caitlin in the chat, any estimate on when building, what was the, what was that?
Building use will be discussed, so.
Uh, we're gonna do that, uh, in about five minutes, uh, uh, we literally have just to go one quick thing, so we need to reappoint Liz to a two-year term on the, on the Housing Trust because we can't have three-year terms on it, turns out, I make a motion, will you appoint Liz Wheeler to a two-year term?
I'll second it.
All right, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and, uh, and if there's no objection, I will be happy to serve, uh, is there, how many of the, of the appointments that we have, how many are one, how many are two? Do we know?
I don't, I don't have that off the hand.
Whether it was.
I know that Jamie was a, uh.
We had at least two, three years, didn't we?
Yeah, but the problem is that we added three different types and now we're going to three different types.
Two, we had two, two.
And three.
And three, now it's gonna be three and four.
All right.
I have one more two-year term.
So if someone wants to make a motion to just put me in for one year, that way it's the most conservative thing and I can be, you know, or whoever can be reappointed next year, unless Chuck.
I'll make a motion, we appoint Patrick White as the representative from the Select Board.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, all right, now we're gonna talk about the building use policy, Caitlin, excellent. Michael, you wanna lead that off?
Yep, um, so, um, obviously, when I arrived here, we were dealing with COVID and all the building uses had been shut down, uh, well, we wanna get the building back open and usable by outside groups, um, as it was done in the past, but we need to come up with, make sure that we have a, a comprehensive policy on what we're doing, um, and I have had some groups tell me different things, some groups and I checked with some people that worked for the town before and just checking what was, um, so, let's see here, sorry, I need to.
Is this for the gym?
This could be for the gym, for meeting rooms, for, you know, any, any outside group that's looking to, and I've given you guys a, a, a quickly drafted form, is right now I'm trying to.
So you're saying there's three tiers and you wanna?
Right, so before we were charging twenty, twenty-five dollars or no charge, um, and I think there, and I cut and paste in the old rules, um, obviously, I don't think for town departments, town programs, town boards, town committees, um, that there should be any charge, um, so that would be tier one, no charge use of, those are council on aging, like where they're using the gym for yoga, stuff like that, the second tier would be twenty-five dollars an hour, this is public schools, nonprofit organization, town groups, this fee could be waived, and I put in there and looking at it, for programs or events that are open to the public and that no free fee is charged to, to the participants, um, and then the third tier would be for for-profit groups or out-of-town groups that are looking to use the facilities, and I threw in their fifty, I just doubled the twenty-five, but I'm not sure where it should be, uh.
Well, when it starts paying for heat, lights.
Right.
Anything else that taxpayers are paying for.
So, I have had some groups ask, and this is where it gets interesting, so if, if a group is, is limiting the use of the building to only, you know, if, if all it's gonna be, I've had everything from people asking for like a school group to use it if, just for, but they only want it for their select friends, only a small group, then to me, that's a group that is asking to use it and it's restricted, so that, to me, it's, that's a private group, so they should be charged to twenty-five dollars an hour, um, groups, if they are going to allow pickup groups or, or something that's in there such as, um, walking groups, we've had an interest in walking group, well, if we're gonna open up the gym for walking groups, whoever wants to show up can, can walk in the gym during, uh, the inclement weather in the winter, um, so what I'm looking for and, and whether we decide it here or decide at the next meeting, you guys wanna think about what we wanna do, I would develop a little more robust policy, but I need to know what the board's feeling about, you guys know the history of the town, who's been using it and what, and what we should be charging, not charging, when should we have groups, um, I do have a volleyball group that, um, is interested in coming in, they wanna keep it to twelve people in an evening, they, um, so if it was twenty-five dollars an hour, or we could go per session, so if they're playing for an hour and a half, just charge them twenty-five dollars per session, uh, if it's twelve people, that's roughly two dollars each for them to rent it and then they could keep it to their group, or you could, if they're willing to, they mentioned that they'd be willing to, uh, do, um, they'd have to be high enough tier players and that they would have, people would have to call the reserve to get in, I don't know if that's an open group, to me, open groups are open groups, that if it's open pickup basketball, you rotate them in, you let them, these are things that I did before with Buildings Run where if it's an open basketball group, then anybody that shows up will be included and rotated in, so, like I said, I'm looking for your guys' guidance on what you think the policy could be, like I said, tier two for public schools, nonprofits, others, instead of twenty-five dollars an hour, it could be twenty-five dollars per session, up to an hour and a half or two hours and then X dollars afterward, whatever, what's your thing? So, I wouldn't mind getting from the Select Board and from the public feedback on what we should.
Let's go with the public first, Caitlin, do you have a comment on that?
I, I do, um.
Can you introduce yourself?
Sure, my, my name is Caitlin Harris and I was born and raised, uh, right in Stockbridge on Quiet Knoll, um, and I currently am a volunteer youth soccer coach for U-12 girls, and what we found this fall season is we actually got rained out quite a bit and, um, we, I've been a part of both Monument, like Berkshire Hills, and also Lennox, and what we found is the varsity teams and the high school teams get first priority, boys and girls of the gyms, and so the youth teams are kinda stuck and, um, whether that be for soccer or basketball, they're limited on their schedule, so I just thought it would be a nice option for a team to have, um, and even practice in the offseason to kinda get some of the, the kids into more, um, sanctioned events as opposed to, um, I don't know, getting in with the wrong group of kids because there's, you know, not much else going on, so, um, when it comes to our organization, I volunteer as a coach, we don't have twenty-five dollars to go every time, we don't have twenty dollars to go every time, so, I mean, if we're, if a resident's organizing it or if it's a school event, um, I guess I just don't know if we have the funds to go ahead and, and contribute.
Well, are your events open to the public and people from Stockbridge?
Um, well, no, they're, they're a team event, but again, the kids don't pay, they only pay for referees, so like none of the coaches make any money off of it, it's just a volunteer thing, um, so.
It's the, it's Berkshire travel soccer, right?
Um, and Lennox, yes.
Out of Lennox.
But, but.
There's two, there's two.
Caitlin, is, are the, can, can youth outside of Lennox participate in it, is my question?
Yes, we have kids from Len, we have kids from Berkshire Hills that participate in Lennox, I know Berkshire Hills opens it up to multiple towns as well.
But what, what she's asking for is a practice time for one team to use the gym exclusively, so, but this, this gets into that.
A backup option.
Yeah, so, uh, travel soccer is, while I understand they pay for the refs, I used to be a, Berkshire, I used to be a coach, I coached the North Adams team for many years, um, and we traveled around and rented spaces to work with the team in the winter and stuff, got the parents to contribute, to rent spaces, because once again, this is, this is an example of a group that doesn't fall into, in, in my opinion, an open group, they're looking to have a closed use of the gym, now, something that could be considered is if volunteers wanted to run a under-twelve workout session and anybody that wanted to show up, um, could come and join in, then I think that's where it becomes something that we could consider waiving the fee, but if it's looked to be just for that one particular team to develop their skills, then.
Michael, just so the public knows, Michael, one of his first jobs was running the Williamstown Youth Centers, isn't that correct? So Michael's a lot of experience with these kinds of issues, I think this is a great guide for a not-to-exceed number, but I, I would, I would urge our, my colleagues as well as, uh, as well as you to have, uh, to take upon yourself the flexibility to work with folks and do what you think is reasonable. This is, there's gonna be a million exceptions to the rule here, sometimes, you know, I, I, I feel like, you know, we, look at, we got a public space, we wanna make it available to public, at the same token, there are expenses to open it up, you know, uh, facilities at night, there's, uh, there's janitorial after use, you know, I think you gotta use your best judgment, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's taxpayers' money.
Yeah, that's right, that's what I'm saying, I, I support using your judgment.
There are costs, and that's why if there's not a community giveback, which would be like, oh, here's a U-12 soccer session each Monday night and any Stockbridge kid can, under twelve, can show up and participate, then I think it's something we could consider waiving the fee for, but if it's just specific to that one team, then I think it's just a team that's looking for exclusive gym time and then.
There'll be a, you know, karate people or the volleyball teams are going there.
Like I said, I don't, we don't need a decision, but I, I, I still need some basic, I know what you're saying about discretion, but it's similar to the zoning board appeals or something else that we deal with, I also want a little guidance here on what you guys are expecting to be, because we have to apply things fairly.
Yeah.
Groups that are coming in.
I like your tiers.
No, I, I'm happy with your tiers and I think it's.
So what I'll do is, I will flesh this out for the next meeting.
Okay.
Cause I just want, like I said, I had no real, um, guidance to go on, so we can flesh out a policy that would give me some flexibility to work with somebody like, uh, Caitlin, about doing something like, you know, what, what would we do to make this an open thing so that there is no cost, or whether or not a group would prefer to stay exclusive, because some groups will say, hey, we just wanna rent the gym and not, yeah, so, yeah.
Um, can we do something like a flat fee for a team, like, say they know that it, they have twelve weeks they wanna practice, but they know they don't have a lot of money, maybe then they can do fundraising or something?
Let me think about that, let me get back now with, I think I got a good idea of what.
You know what I mean, like, so that they still pay, but maybe like it helps mitigate a little bit of the cost, because they are gonna be regular?
Right, all right, let me consider that, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna work on this and bring back a draft policy.
I think that's correct.
With some discretion in there on fees and other stuff so that we can try to accommodate groups.
Any other comments on building use policy, you also can reach out to Michael as he drafts it over the next few weeks.
We got.
Feel free to call.
Pat Flynn.
And Pat Flynn, yes?
Uh, just a clarification of these, um, fees, just, that you're talking about just for the gym?
Uh, gym, meeting rooms and other stuff, but somebody like a community group like Laurel Hill, those would be ones that we would waive the use of, um, because of the benefit that's to the community.
Stuff to sign to.
And, and like the Williams High School Alumni Association meetings too, so you're saying there would be no cost for those?
Yeah, we wanted to look at, yeah.
Yeah, no, no one would dare, Pat.
Right, yes, yes.
Yeah, because the, the school used to be there for us, but.
Right, exactly, it used to be Williamstown, right, right, right.
Caitlin would like to.
Hi Caitlin.
Hi, I'm so sorry, I just want to, as we discuss and, you know, bring up ideas. I just wanted to note that some programs that do restrict use, part of the restriction is due to insurance and liability. So for, for a youth program, the parents sign a waiver and enter their child into the program and the coaches have a little insurance and protection. So I guess if we can just consider what the coaches would be liable for or at risk of if it's open to any member who has not signed the waiver.
So the biggest thing about waivers and insurance, wait, and, and certificates of insurance that we would require. So the good thing is the U-12 Berkshire County Best Soccer League, you would be able to get a certificate of insurance, so each of those programs is insured and the kids sign waivers on it. Unless things have changed, I've been out of it for a while. As far as, if we run a free pro, for a program, basically the town, we, we have coverage for running recreational programs. So we can run, so basically, an open session would be something, that's why we're allowing the free use because we're getting something back and we would be the ones responsible for it. So we can run recreations and the rest, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Alright. Any other comments? No, hearing none. Alright, so we're gonna expect you to come back to us with, with the next generation of that. Do we have a motion on the minutes from August eleventh, twenty-fifth, eighth, twenty-second and October thirteenth?
We accept the minutes.
Alright, do you have a second? If you both lay in a motion, flip a coin.
Aye.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, great, and public comment? Michael.
So I gave Michael Canalis the signatures. I have a petition with one hundred and thirty-six signatures of Stockbridge voters who want you, the select board, to seriously consider and formally vote a T E. And I encourage all Stockbridge voters to attend that tax meeting when the date is announced. Here's the petition.
Any other public comment? Hearing none, motion adjourned.
Second.
Second.
Alls in favor, aye. Thank you all for coming.